That did?
Yeah.
Are they really? Did she know that? I like that.
All ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, it is 4:31. Let's just thing in motion, roll call please.
Mr. Vale?
Here.
Mr. Sutella?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Mrs. Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Winarski?
Here.
Mrs. Rennie?
Here.
And Chairman Shan?
Here.
All right, number two is hearing of the public. Anyone here from the public that would like to say a few words? Is there anybody on the Zoom meeting that would like to say a few words? Last call for hearing of the public.
Can I say a few words?
I think you can.
Okay. So, I just wanted to ask, I don't know if this is appropriate time to ask, if there's any questions from council or anything that I can provide information, concerns.
We actually, we have a comment from the planning department. One more step down.
Okay.
Just hold on, we'll get to there, but I didn't know if you had something you want to say quick.
Oh, sure. One thing was just that the plan was paid for by a grant from the DEP. We had a very talented consultant help us with this, who's really well renowned in the state. And implementation of the plan isn't asking for any county fund money or funds from taxpayers and plan to, I have a plan to pay for it through DEP grants, landfill fees, and public and private grants as needed. And my position, Erie County Recycling, and all of the programs that I do are funded through state grants and grants for nonprofits and landfill fees. So really, it's pretty sustainable. And this is just sort of a plan to how can I be the best in this position and help the municipalities.
Gotcha. Okay, that puts us to the comments from the planning department. John, are there nothing?
No, Lynn, were you, was that what you had?
Yeah, pretty much.
All right, are you good there? Anything else?
Yeah, so I also have included a letter. We sent out the, we had the official comment period where we sent letters to all of the surrounding counties, the municipality school districts. And this came back from Crawford and was a, you know, very supportive letter. And then I also gave everyone the key recommendations from the report. It's, it's like a lot of, to read about recycling. I think it's really interesting, but if you don't have time to read the entire thing, I would say these few pages really give you the synopsis of the findings and the recommendations.
Good. Comments from council?
Go ahead. When you say grants, you said the grants from the DEP. How much money was that?
So, $61,000.
And then... Does that keep you up and running, or can you explain?
Sure.
Let's say what you're going to do with that $61,000.
Okay, so Act 101 is the state recycling bill, and it's basically what dictates how solid waste is managed within Pennsylvania and provides funding for counties and municipalities to implement strategies locally. So they have a series of grants. The 901A is a planning grant. You can use it for various things. So we used it to hire the consultant to do this plan. And it was just over $60,000. So that's what that was spent on. And then with implementation, in the back of the plan, I have an implementation chart, and that cites the specific costs and the specific grant that those funds qualify for. So for example, one of the strategies is communication, having a more cohesive communication and more education and outreach to help the public understand what is recyclable. So that is coming from what we call a 902 grant, and it's up to $345,000 every two years for recycling infrastructure and/or education. So that's where that funding comes from. So then using that, we will sort of revamp recycling education, do recycling guides and magnets, coloring books for schools and the kids, do radio and TV commercials, and have like a rebranded mascot to really get the word out there.
So this is to educate the public?
That's one of the goals, is one of the key.
Let's say that's your start of...
Right, that is the starting point.
Your starting point?
Mm-hmm.
Where do we want to end up, or where can we end up like this?
So, I think, um, there's a lot of different places we could end up. The goal is for recycling in Erie County to be sustainable and also to be, to improve our recycling rate and the quality of our recyclables. So, one of the things on there is a feasibility study to see if having like a, some sort of public-private partnership to do a recycling certification facility. I think that's just a feasibility study. So whether or not that would make sense, this plan isn't saying. It's just saying that's something according to our problems and the research we've done, that's something that we might want to look into.
I found it interesting when you talked a couple of these, I guess we don't think about it.
Yeah.
If somebody puts, put this jar in that can, somebody will pick it up. I thought it was interesting, out in the county where there's not many residents, actually, recycling companies aren't here.
Yeah.
And, you know, I guess that's something you have to think of. And then, the other thing was, we lack people, lack companies that bid on these, these things, just like what happened at Cable T. One time we got three or four, and we got one sewer at the worst, and I started... On the educational part, I think that would be great to do that. I know Mill Creek just started, when John was here, I don't know if you were there or not, John was there, that recycling garbage, or it's the compost.
Yeah.
Her department paid for that.
Oh, is that right?
Yes.
Which is very interesting, but I told Ms. Clara, I says, you did that thing, and two days later, her voice manager came out and said, well, raising, we're raising the fee for garbage salary. And this was costing $10 a month, I think, so she said it was. But you paid for that, and now I know why you were there. Thank you.
Now, if I may, and Lynn, correct me if I'm wrong, someday, if it made sense, the county could have a solid waste authority, they could enact rules that everyone had to recycle. And if you did that, then when they go out to bid, then everybody would be on the same playing field, and the collector, raccoon, waste management, whoever, would have to pick up recyclables at the curb. And that's a potential that might be too politically unpopular, but you know, right now, the municipalities that aren't mandated decide. And if everybody did it in the county, obviously, it'd be a lot better.
And another option that we could try also, if that didn't work or wasn't politically working, would be, as mentioned in the plan, is joint bidding and saying, okay, if you want Summit's contract, you also have to take Waterbury's contract. Because then, basically, what's happening now is one company's coming in and picking the best in the bag and leaving the bottom of the barrel for any competition, and that's not working. So saying, if you want the most densely populated, you have to also take the neighboring county and doing the bidding in a way where, you know, you can't have the best ones without taking some of the surrounding municipalities that you are currently refusing to service.
Andre?
Talk about it. Okay, plus, is that a case to be there or something? That could buy for, with other competition, with other municipalities?
So we, we have that grant. We were awarded it on Earth Day, actually. So we did get that grant, and that is for the education campaign. So I'm just waiting for those contracts to come in, and I'm sure I'll be having, sending a signature sheet fairly soon, within the next two departments to that.
Who was the consultant?
Nestor Resources, her name is Michelle Nestor. Yes. Yeah, so there is a page about, like, acknowledging IRG, and that, you know, when this plan was created, they were planning to do, I think, the plastic three through seven. And basically, we would be such a small percent locally Erie of what they need. They need like hundreds of thousands of tons of plastic. And in Erie County, we probably collectively, we have less than probably around four to seven thousand tons, so, of those plastics. So we would really be like sort of small potatoes. So we could partner with them, we could sell them our plastic, we could be a source for them. There's a lot of ways that, it wouldn't be doubling it. It would...
But you are aware that, that, I think, I would drive the rent, but it closed on the property over there, and it looks like a lot of things that you're doing, or talking about. Looks like that's not the way. And while we're getting state grant, like, for, it just seems like we could save those things. Private, save that, and put it on the back of the tax. So, I'm just...
Right, well, I was, I thought that they were only taking waste plastic three through seven, that's not recycled.
They're taking it all, I can't speak for IRG, but my understanding is they were taking it, they were sorting it. They had used for, and it was very little by. It's been a while since I looked.
Okay.
I feel that they were, they were in the opportunities zone. And they were actually part of the national, I guess, attention. The opportunity zones are good. And that model is, that's the action, that's a national model.
Yeah.
So I kind of, it'd be interesting to talk about. On that, we'll have some discussion.
Okay. Yeah, at the time that we did this, they were only looking at plastic three through seven. Whereas currently, we are recycling plastic one and twos, cardboard, paperboard, newspaper, and full-size office paper, and it's aluminum and metal food pans. Yeah, so regardless, like, we can still kind of all work together, and there's still, we still need to deal with, you know, the cardboard and the glass and all of the other commodities.
Is there a wisdom that happened conversations with the joint session or something?
There is, it would be part of a, if, like, a feasibility study if we did do that. And then also...
The feasibility study, most feasibility studies consider the notification efforts of this infrastructure, for instance, development, like, up the street, up in college. We have to take into consideration whatever higher academic offers were here, and that was included at the time, the rural region. So this is kind of, and to Mr. Williams. About somewhere down the road, it created a story. Sounds like regional operation. All those municipalities are governed by their own statutes. Too, so it's hard to affect that community count without state, without state, state blessing. It would have to be like the registration, equal five dollar registration, y'all know that for that thing. Stuff that seems like a pretty steep hill to climb, the five year. It's pretty quick, we seem to add this to the five year, that's why we already approved that. That we already approved the five year, that's a point.
Four.
Though we did our three year. You're required to have this here in the intention to add that to the population. We've seen all the rest of the building. And I apologize to you to, to have so fast, I did go back. I'd love to see what you had, send me that stuff. I should probably walk back. But just for, it's kind of hard for me to consider here. He is incidentally here, because it's not being properly recorded. This is more public comment than it here, or public comment than here. It's entirely something entirely different. But, but to be, well, thank you too for the hard work.
Thank you.
And I, I know, I forgive you for this stuff. It's a, it's a hard work. But it's a lot of questions to, it's too many questions to be asked, to be asked or answered in the, in the, I find it's personal. I guess I owe you an apology for that too, although it wasn't, it wasn't the appropriate time to. So to go on, that's kind of the answer question.
Right. Yeah, and this is my first time going through this as well, so I'm kind of figuring it out.
Yeah. Thank you, though, I won't be late.
There is no feasibility study yet? This plan suggests that maybe a feasibility study would be done, has not been done. So that is, part of this plan is to look at that, and that nothing's been done yet, that's right.
Where did these five recommendations start from?
That's the, this is, this is page 12 through 14 of the strategic plan. It's basically the executive summary.
So what's this, that's the consultant, the consultant, or what?
For, uh...
A broad, that has a...
She, yeah, she, she basically said, this is the state of recycling. These are the problems that we're seeing. This, and we did that by talking to the businesses and the hollers and surveying municipalities. We had a steering committee of public, the public, like, nonprofits and businesses and municipalities. And then taking all of that information and that input coming up with the corrective actions to the problems, and that is basically what the plan is. And it's not saying definitely do all of these things. It's saying, you know, these things are what could potentially be solutions that should be explored further. Lynn, just a, Miss Nestor is on the phone. Oh, great.
That's one thing that...
And I'm, I'm happy to take any further questions. I'm happy to do another presentation to everyone and specifically address any questions.
I just have one question now. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
No, what, what does, what exactly, what is the, is this?
So the ask is just to have the county council support this and say, yes, we do need to improve our recycling. We do need to collaborate with the municipalities. I put this in front of the cog, and basically, I'll be going out to the municipalities and trying to get the joint bidding happening, trying to get universal co- cohesive communication plan going. So each flyer, it's like, you have the same picture of a bottle and a glass and a jug and a jar, and you're using the same words to describe it. And just having councils say that, like, yes, this is important, and we do care about this in recycling, helps, helps me go to the municipalities and say, hey, this is, this is something that is important and just shows that, um...
Oh, the other, the capital consultant, is she a local consultant? Is she somebody, is she local here, somebody brought in?
So she's from Pittsburgh. She is one of the professional recyclers of Pennsylvania. They're sort of like adjacent to the DEP and kind of help all of the municipalities and counties with Act 101 and understanding it and receiving training. And she is one of the executives on that. And also, she wrote our 10-year solid waste plan. Pro, P R O P, professional recyclers of Pennsylvania, an executive. And then she wrote our 10-year solid waste management plan, which is even more comprehensive and includes like our plans for landfill capacity and such. So she has a very good understanding of the recycling, recycling system in Erie County.
Well, it's just one question, like, you're part of the management that you told us to work. That's systemic problems. Naturally, we fix all, we have a better system. What is, what do you want, or depending from, what Erie County's role in this? We're not going to go into recycling, correct?
I don't know.
Or are we going to be the magnet that tries to fix these problems with the help of other people, other municipalities?
Yeah, it just starts with having some sort of big, but also specific shared goals, saying like, these are, we want to make recycling better. These are some pathways that we can try. There's trial and error, so that's why there's multiple options in there and different ways to do things. And just that we're gonna, we have a plan and a timeline to pursue potential solutions. And we're not just gonna kind of do the same old thing that we've always done and just kind of let recycling be.
Kick your hand down.
Exactly, exactly.
I understand, you're classic.
The only question I have is, I get a lot of questions about the class.
Yes.
You know, I hate taking that, you know, jar and throwing it in the garbage because I know where it's going. It used to be, I lived in Harbor Creek, we had a pretty good system where it was just one-stop shop, you dumped everything in a big, nice orange and black bin. But now we can't do anything with glass. That seems to be the Achilles' heel of recycling in Erie right now.
Yes.
From what I get, what I see. So is there any avenue where we're gonna look at this?
Yeah.
And make a start cycling system on the way?
So my partnership with Prism Glass is all those blue bins that you see around. So that's part of Erie County recycling. And that's something that's encouraged are those public-private partnerships. There's going to be a pilot this summer to pick glass up curbside in a small selection of the city of Erie. So just kind of trying those things and see, a lot of it is how consumers respond. You know, do they, will they use a glass drop-off? Does it need to be picked up at their curbside? You know, can waste management get the, have they got the sortation capacity to now take glass back into the stream as they have done in their most recent contract with Mill Creek? Can they do it for all of our municipalities? If they can do it for Mill Creek, looking at, at those kinds of things.
Gotcha.
Yes, sir. So in your municipality, they would write the law such that glass goes into single stream, they can force it, and then therefore, when you go out to bid, the recy, whoever's picking up your recycling would take it. So I had lunch with a gentleman from the city of Erie today, and they absolutely can change what goes into their single-stream recycling bag. Waste management doesn't want the glass because there's not a lot of value, so.
I know there's a private company that's doing the glass right now.
There's two.
Two?
Two in the city here, and we're trying to help both of them.
Right.
But we can't use like a DEP grant to buy a bin for somebody. It's a private company. So we're kind of hamstrung with the funds that we have and how we can help.
Have there been studies on what happens after the recyclables are taken from? Because I've seen all kinds of documentaries that show that people feel really good about recycling, and then they wind up getting dumped somewhere.
So that's where the education comes in. Because if people are recycling correctly and there isn't contamination, the commodities are worth money. A ton of PET is going for like $4,000 or $5,000 right now. That's the number one plastic, like the, like the water bottles are like this bottle. So, so that is, it's worth money. So it is, if it's properly sorted and properly recycled, most likely it is, is actually being recycled. There's a huge demand for post-consumer products. Companies are required now by the SEC to report what they're doing to be sustainable. Using post-consumer recycled material is a big one. So there is a demand. So yes, a lot of it is going to the landfill, but one major reason is that there's wishful recycling, and the machines aren't able to sort what people are putting in the bin. So that's often when that happens. Our recycling goes to Neville Island, which is a sortation facility in Pittsburgh. I'll be organizing a tour of it. I can extend that invitation if anyone's interested. I've found the industry quite interesting, but I can extend an invitation.
Andre, do yourself a favor.
Yeah, so we do, we're not, we're not, there will be a justice sorting machines. Operator, I'm trying to, giving out that word. Will there come a time when we're required to buy some of that?
So basically, the plan doesn't say either way. It says, maybe we should look into it. Right now, we're paying much higher than the state average per quarter than other counties and municipalities.
Last question.
Yeah.
Is there, have, have you talked about third municipalities in the column? Or people that live in the municipalities? Have they had such a poll or survey?
So...
To engage people's interest and also add to the... So this is not just a five?
Right, so it is on the Erie County Recycling website, right at the top there. And when I do my like tabling events, I let people know, and also...
You don't know, or you call them?
I, I just let them know. I just let them know that it's up there, but we only surveyed the municipalities. And I mean, I think I have my finger on the beat. Like, I usually get the calls about the issues, and that's sort of what I put into this plan as well and inform consultants about. Like, glass is a big one, so that's something we said, okay, this is something that we're getting a ton of calls about. So just kind of sharing the input that I get from other municipalities on their constituent frustrations, and also whoever calls my recycling line, and their, what they tell me, so.
Okay, just to wrap up, you have the feasibility study, just said, there's something. The feasibility study is going to be paid for. And a part of that feasibility study, or could, part of that feasibility study include, because it's kind of hard to have a public here in a public building. So would that, would that include both actually owning the public here, or doing some type of whole concerted respect to citizens' challenge?
Yeah, I can look into that. We did post a public notice in the paper twice, but I think the way that we communicate is different now, so maybe that should be sent out in a different form.
Yeah, because we don't want to just check the box.
Right.
We actually want participation.
Yeah.
We actually want feedback. We don't want to say, oh, we did it here, because we're required by laws, or something that's going down the road. It's not that. Our ability, or I don't think, it's the thing I think about that IRG, but unfortunately, people don't go to our website. People sort of check. It's not here, it's not this. To check for that type of information or material, which should. Education piece with the other grants, and you're reaching out to the schools and things of that nature. I would think that at some point, citizens will have a real opportunity, time, and honor I get, we do, we do the budget here. I've been here nine, solid five, that's why, you know, how many people come to those hearings? Not a single person, only we hear about the budget. January, February. We hear about it, and I bet you it's all to the donor. That same thing holds true to this project. It'd be, it's down the road, just like the pit docks, but then the people catch up with it, and then all hell breaks up. So we can avoid that.
Yeah, I did, like, I presented it to the COG, and then I also, the Penn Future Group was also aware of it, and as well as our steering committee, so. Yeah.
Okay, very good. Just went a little bit over, if that's okay, it's important stuff, we have to make sure it's on there. Any other questions, real quick? Thank you. John, thanks for coming in, and I'll accept it in German. So, good. Take three-minute break, and we'll come back, because everybody's already ready to go.